Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the school board meeting for Tuesday, February 25th. Call to order. Roll call, Ms. Burns?
Mr. Parentano?
Present.
Mr. Allen?
Present.
Mrs. Bowman?
Here.
Ms. Boyle?
Here.
Mrs. Hollenbach?
Present.
Mr. Kovitz?
Here.
Mr. Marington is absent with prior notice. Mr. Cirillo?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. The board met in executive session this evening, prior to this meeting, to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, the purchase or lease of real property, matters related to litigation, and matters related to school safety and security. Our district mission statement: "The Nishamani community builds futures by empowering each child to become a productive citizen and a lifelong learner." Announcements. I have an announcement this evening. I'll need that back. Mr. Trent? I would like to provide the community some commentary on the resolution of a Title VII discrimination suit that was filed against the school district. I believe it is in the public's best interest to provide this transparency. I am sharing these views in my capacity as a board member. The matter stems from a public meeting held in June 2017. The facts in question relate to the board's authority in exercising its oversight concerning recommendations for hiring. The lawsuit centered, among other things, on the board votes concerning agenda items related to the hiring of certified staff. At the June 2017 board meeting, a list of school -- a list of administration recommendations for hiring for certified staff was presented to the board, consisting of 19 individuals. Out of those 19, 11 were new hire positions. For those 11 new positions, the district had an interview pool of approximately 450 applicants. Those 450, 50 were chosen as finalists for the 11 openings. During the debate of that agenda item, I made a motion to remove three of the applicants that administration recommended for hire. I stated at the time my fiscal reasons for doing so. My motion to remove was seconded, and the board voted -- was to affirm. The board then proceeded to a separate vote to hire the remaining 16 applicants. Following that vote, a subsequent motion was made to hire the three previously removed applicants, which failed. After a lengthy back-and-forth and open debate, the superintendent stated why he felt one of these three removed applicants should be reconsidered. Mr. Jones suggested the board could make a motion for that one applicant. A board member made such a motion, which was seconded, and approved by a majority of the board, to hire the recommended applicant. At no time were the remaining two applicants approved or hired by the board, which the plaintiff had claimed occurred in their legal action. Sometimes afterwards, the district was notified that one of the two remaining candidates filed a discrimination action with the U.S. Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, claiming, among other things, gender discrimination. Example, the plaintiff was not hired due to their gender was their claim. The plaintiff's EEOC action named me, Superintendent Jones, and Board President at the time, Marty Sullivan, as aiders and abetors, which made us targets of the EEOC discrimination action. The plaintiff's claim was reported in two news articles. One was July 3, 2018, in the Bucks County Courier-Times, and on July 11, 2018, on the Levittown Now website, which quoted from the reporters purportedly thought was contained in the plaintiff's lawsuit. More specifically, and I quote, "The foregoing conduct by the defendants constitutes unlawful discrimination and/or retaliation against a plaintiff on the basis of gender and violated Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and other applicable law." End quote. Plaintiff sought a finding from the EEOC that she was not hired due to gender discrimination. But the EEOC didn't find that such discrimination occurred, but did provide the plaintiff with the right to sue letter that allowed the plaintiff to file a lawsuit in federal court. In most cases, discrimination plaintiffs need the EEOC to issue such a letter as a prerequisite to filing suits in court. Therefore, thereafter, the plaintiff did pursue an action in the federal system, naming only the Nishamani school district as a defendant, and claiming that the district had not hired the plaintiff as a teacher due to her gender. But since the plaintiff had named me, Superintendent Jones, and Mr. Sullivan in her EEOC complaint, the threat of us being added as defendants in federal court remained. The school district aggressively defended itself against that lawsuit due to the fact we felt it had no support in facts or law. June 2017 board meeting in question was recorded and televised. Anybody wishing to make a conclusion for themselves can view it on the school district's YouTube channel. The school district, the board, Mr. Jones, Mr. Sullivan, and nor myself have not discriminated against anybody when hiring. As represented in the June 2017 board meeting and open debate, the concerns I and other board members brought to the discussion were those concerning finance and our future payroll liabilities. Gender was never discussed. We want the public to know that we had documented conversations about our payroll liabilities between board members and administration dating back as far as January of 2017, long before the board was ever presented with hiring recommendation lists in the June 2017 board meeting. And I personally, for as long as I've been a member on this board, have spoken about our pension liabilities while maintaining a school system that the public can afford. These facts prove to be crucial in our defense. We also want to convey to the public how intimidating these cases can be. When a litigant files a discrimination action, it allows plaintiffs additional protections and federal court access, something that has the effect of putting pressure on defendants, in this case, the school district, to settle, even if the defendants feel the case has no merit at all. The board was faced with many difficult decisions over these two years. At the beginning of the case, the plaintiff made a large monetary demand, asking for back pay and the value of lost benefits, and more, to put pressure on the district to settle the case. The district also -- excuse me, the plaintiff also sought court-ordered relief, forcing the district to hire the plaintiff. The board said no. As the case went forward, the plaintiff made other settlement demands, as -- excuse me, as well, which the board also refused despite the pressures being exerted on the district. Frankly, most of us felt that you have to have faith in the system, that the facts, which were so overwhelming in our behalf, justice will prevail. We also thought about our duty to protect our taxpayers, the district's reputation, and the governance of our actions. We affirmed our attorney to prepare for trial. Our counsel informed the plaintiff no settlement would be forthcoming. The district pressed ahead with the case, filing a motion that asked the federal court to dismiss the plaintiff's case prior to trial. Rather than responding to the district's motion, the plaintiff agreed to enter into a stipulation, voluntarily dismissing the case with prejudice. This stipulation, which is a public document, among other things, bars the plaintiff from, again, suing the district, as well as board members, administration, and others, for not hiring her, and reinforces that the board conducted itself properly. There are, however, some negative results. The settlement doesn't come with some pain to the district. The SAGA cost the district about $20,000 in taxpayers' revenue for insurance deductible, countless hours devoted by our board administration and staff to defend, and I know for myself and Mr. Sullivan, as well as Mr. Jones, you know, the personal indignation, you know, that comes with being named as a defendant in such a suit. We all know we live in America, and we can sometimes be a litigious society. But I hope in the future such actions will be tempered, knowing this board's resolve, and that we will not be intimidated into settlements. This matter is now closed and no longer before the board. Thank you. We'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Happy winter. This is one of the nicest winters we've enjoyed. Fifty-some degrees, 66 next week, one of the days next week. We're hoping to escape with little to no snow. At least superintendents are. We had a day last week where we extended the weekend for our students, but our teachers came back, our staff, for training. And so on Tuesday, we had a lot of different training activities for our teachers, and I highlight in my report the fact that our counselors and social workers were included in an important AVID seminar, which is an initiative around our instructional practices here in the school, and it was just a good day across the district, elementary, middle school, high school, for some adult learning to take place. I did say at the prior meeting that I announced, I think, our kindergarten efforts in registration. At the time, I was telling you we were pretty close to 400. We're now at 505 as of last Friday. That's really amazing for the district, a real plus for the registration office, the registrar, the work that's being done to make sure that our kindergarten enrollment is attended to as early as possible. 500 of a probably about 650 is where we typically have been ending up in that area, so it's a good percentage of our students are already in the pipeline for registration. Congratulations to the various musicals that took place this last weekend, or recent weeks. Matilda at the high school, The Little Mermaid here at Maple Point, and Shrek at Pecession. Shrek survived a health issue there, and they had a double performance on Saturday, which was really nice, and all of those shows were well-received, and Sandberg had the Frozen Musical a little while back as well. I do want to point out that this is it. Coming up, Friday and Saturday, we have our Gym Night at the High School. Tickets are done, don't even look for them at this point, but we're looking for an exciting event again. The three sessions for Gym Night culminating in the Saturday night total conclusion of the event. So it's a wonderful tradition here at Nishamani, and it starts off this Friday evening. Another tradition that started up is the Nishamani Education Foundation's efforts with the Harlem Wizards. That's coming back here to Nishamani. Tickets are on sale. I'm looking for the date, and I'm not seeing the date in my announcement. It's in April? April 18. Thank you. Congratulations to our business students. Our business students came in second and third place, where they were competing at Gwinnett Mercy's Fifth Annual Dual Enrollment High School Case Study Competition. Our students were competing under the names of Doc's Orders and Doc's Proteges in memory of their business teacher, Janet Doherty, and each of the two teams representing the school district performed extremely well, second and third place in the overall competition. Congratulations. There's a reminder in the bulletin here, and a reminder to the community, that a new Pennsylvania Safe-to-Say app that students can use to inform the adults here in the community if there's any concerns that they have. It's been something that has been activated here locally, and something that we're able to follow up and support students here in the district. We had our 100-day celebration. Do you remember doing that in elementary school? Our elementary schools have a lot of fun. We're over the 100-day mark. That means we're well past the halfway point, but our students had a lot of fun enjoying different 100-day activities this past week. College night is coming up at the high school. We thank our Guidance Counseling Center for putting on a program to help you and students understand the application process for college, the college enrollment process. That evening is March 5. That's next week, Thursday, and it'll be in the Black Box Theater. Program starts at 7 o'clock. And then some sports news. Congratulations to our high school swimming team. Suburban won the championship. We had a couple who excelled, a number of our swimmers. A.J. McClarkin was the Suburban One League champion for the 100-meter breaststroke. Lachlan Stay, Suburban League champion in the 100-fly, and Max Bukowicz, champion in the 100-backstroke. So congratulations to those three, representing Nishamani. Cheerleaders were the SOL first-place winners, high school varsity cheerleaders. Congratulations to them. Wrestlers, we had two wrestlers, Zack Martin and Gunner Spain, as District One East champions, and the high school varsity team will have seven total wrestlers advancing to the southeastern regionals. And then finally, our girls' basketball team this winter had a wonderful season, very successful, SOL champs, and that was the third time we were champions in the last four years. Kristen Curley scored her 1,000th point back end of the season. Congratulations to Kristen. And then they had a nice run in the playoffs recently as well. So congratulations to our winter sports at the high school. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. That brings us to routine matters. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm still learning. This brings us to public comment. Does anybody sign up for public comment? There is no sign of public comment. Does anyone wish to approach the podium and speak on an agenda item? Seeing no one, now we will move on to routine matters. First, we have 2.01, Meeting Minutes. I'd like to make a motion to accept item 2.01, Meeting Minutes. Second by Mrs. Hollenbach. Any comments, questions, concerns? All in favor? Aye. Against? Abstentions?
I abstain from the February 11, 2020 Public Works Session because I wasn't in attendance at that meeting.
Okay. We need a roll call vote? Do not on that item? Okay. Thank you very much. Passes eight, excuse me, seven, zero, one. Thank you. I'd like to make a master motion for items 2.02, Treasuries Report, 2.03, Check Register and Procurement Card Purchases, 2.04, Budget Transfers, 2.05, Bids, 2.06, Investments, 2.07, Exonerations. May I have a second? Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Against? Abstentions? Passes eight, zero. Personnel. That's me. Okay. Personnel Administrative, 3.01, Retirements, Resignations, End of Assignments. Resolve that the Nishamani School Board of Directors hereby approves the following retirements, resignations of administrative staff. Judith Markowski, resignation, effective date, February 6, 2020. May I have a second? Second by Mrs. Boyle. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Passes eight, zero. That brings us to Section 4. Mr. Sullivan, that one's for you.
Personnel certificated. I'd like to make a master motion to approve item 4.01, Retirement, Resignations, End of Assignments, 4.02, Leaves of Absence, 4.03, Revised Return-Some Leave, 4.04, Appointments, 4.05, Co-Curricular Appointments, 4.06, Ancillary Appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Can I have a second? Second by Mrs. Bowman. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight, zero. Section 5, Personnel. Support, Mrs. Hollenbach.
I'd like to make a master motion for 5.01, Retirement, Resignations, End of Assignments, 5.02, Leaves of Absence, 5.03, Revised Leaves of Absence, 5.04, Appointments, 5.05, Co-Curricular Resignations, and 5.06, Co-Curricular Appointments.
Thank you, Ms. Hollenbach. May I have a second? Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any comments, questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes eight, zero.
I'd like to make a motion for 5.07, Ancillary Appointments. Resolve that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following ancillary appointments of support staff. Anita McClarkin, Core Swimming Communications Coordinator at the high school.
Thank you, Ms. Hollenbach. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Comments, questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
I abstain, based on my affiliation with Core Swimming.
Roll call vote?
The roll call vote is needed, yes.
Ms. Burns?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowman?
Abstain.
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Cirillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Hollenbach?
Yes.
Mr. Kovitz?
Yes.
Mr. Parentano?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Motion passes. Moves us on to Item 6, Educational Development. Mrs. Boyle, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 6.01, which is a settlement agreement, 6.02, which is overnight trips, and 6.03, which is out-of-district placements.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. May I have a second? Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any comments, questions, concerns? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Passes eight, zero. Brings us to Business Operations. Mrs. Hollenbach, would you please read them for us?
I'd like to make a motion for 7.01, BCIU Number 22, 2020-2021 Program and Services and Instructional Materials and Research Service Budgets. Whereas the Nishamani School District is one of 13 school districts in Bucks County that utilizes the services of the Bucks County Intermediate Unit Number 22, and whereas the Nishamani School District contributes to the support of the Bucks County Intermediate Unit, and whereas the school code requires that the intermediate unit budget be presented and acted upon by the Board of School Directors. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the Bucks County Intermediate Unit's Programs and Services and Instructions, Materials, and Researches Service Budget for 2020-2021 in the amount of 21,07,422, with our district's share to be 1,07,528.62.
Thank you, Mrs. Hollenbach. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Allen. Any comments, questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Passes eight, zero. 702, Ms. Hollenbach.
7.02, PA Pre-K Counts Replacement Agreement. Whereas the Nishamani School District and the Bucks County Intermediate Unit Number 22 have entered into an agreement dated February 3, 2020, to replace items Bucks IU received from Walter Miller Elementary School for Emergency Use in Upper Bucks County, and whereas Bucks IU agreed to replace all items with new materials in the attached inventory list by the end of the 2019-2020 school year, no later than June 30, 2020, in preparation of the opening of the pre-k counts classroom in the Nishamani School District. And whereas the cost of the furniture, supplies, and assessment materials equals 24,541.62, and the cost of curriculum materials equals 41,03.92, for a total cost of 28,645.54 to replace all items, and whereas Bucks IU shall maintain all financial reporting requirements to support all purchases of replacement items for seven years. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Nishamani School Board agrees to ratify and affirm this agreement with Bucks IU for the replacement of materials borrowed.
Thank you, Ms. Hollenbach. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, concerns?
This was to replace equipment. Just clarification, that was to -- we loaned them equipment to replace equipment they used, lost in a fire. That's correct?
Yes.
All right. That's -- we do good things, I want to make sure.
Anything you need to add to that, Mr. Jones? No, that's very good. All righty. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Passes eight, zero. Last item, 7.03, Ms. Hollenbach.
7.03, BCIU Number 22 Board Appointment. Whereas the Bucks County Intermediate Unit Number 22 is governed by an intermediate unit board of directors, and whereas the Nishamani School District has the responsibility to duly elect a board member to participate on the intermediate unit board, and whereas Nishamani's participation is critical to the operation of the intermediate unit, including the services offered to the Nishamani School District. And whereas the president of the Nishamani Board of School Directors has nominated Paul Cerulo to complete the term of Irene Boyle of the intermediate unit board ending June 30, 2020, and whereas the president of the Nishamani Board of School Directors has additionally nominated Paul Cerulo to serve on the intermediate unit board for a three-year term, July 1, 2020, through June 30, 2023, where he is eligible to succeed himself without limitations as the number of terms or until another representative from the school district is nominated. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby appoints Paul Cerulo to serve as the representative to the Bucks County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors. I hope I didn't butcher your name.
Thank you, Mrs. Hollenbach. May I have a second? Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any comments, questions, or concerns? I would just like to add that serving the IU board is an additional task to what it is to serve as a school board member, not unlike what we do at the tech board, for those that serve on the tech board, except the tech board's close, the IU's up in Doylestown. You have lots of meetings, you have to run back and forth to Doylestown. Mrs. Boyle and Mrs. Cummings before her have served this board well in their service with the IU, and we thank you for all the years that you made that trek up and back. And now, Paul, this is on you now, but we know that you have a real passion for this, and we hope it meets your goals and also provides the board with the liaison and the contacts that we need, because we're very involved with the IU, and we're thankful to you to take this on. So thank you very much. All right. Any other comments? All righty. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? This is your chance, Paul. Abstentions? Motion passes eight, zero. Thank you. Okay. That moves us to Policy, Section 8. Mrs. Boyle?
I'd like to make a motion to approve 8.01, which is the second reading of Policies 219 and 246.
Second. Aye.
For the record, can we just say, because you didn't ask for comments or anything? Can we say what the policies are for the record, please?
I'm sorry. Thank you. 219, which is in the Pupils section, deals with behavioral management and positive behavioral plan, and Section 246, which is also in the Pupils section, deals with school wellness. Thank you. I apologize for missing that. In my laughter, I moved on. That brings us to Other Board Businesses. Is there any board member that has any business before the board? Seeing none. Second period of public comment? Does anybody wish to approach the podium for public comment? Don't rush. Okay. Nobody, no takers. Board comment? Is there any board comment this evening? Mrs. Bowman?
I would just like to congratulate Nishamani Swimming on a very successful season. There were a lot of records broken, and the diving team, our first year of an official diving team, and they did great. Also, wanted to wish all the kids at Gym Night well, and go blow.
Very good. Is there anyone else with any additional comment this evening? Mr. Allen? Mr. Allen.
Good evening, everyone. I have a couple items to address. Number one, also, Nishamani's favorite weekend coming up, Gym Night. There's nothing that divides our community yet brings it together somehow like Gym Night. It's a great, great event, unlike anything, I think, in any of the districts near us. Everyone talks about it, even after they've moved away. Thirty, forty years later, they still talk about Gym Night. Wish everyone well, and good luck, both teams. Go Blue. The other thing, the other thing I want to say, I have a couple things from tech school that I just wanted to point out because they came up after my, our last meeting. We sent a number of our students, competed tech students, at the DECA competition in Hershey on February 19th and 21st, and I just wanted to shout out to them, they brought home 25 medals, which is phenomenal. They did a great job, and I just wanted to make sure they were recognized for that. Another thing that tech was recently achieved, I believe is best thing, because we deliberately went after this. They were awarded the 2020 State School of Character. What that means, that in schools of character, the adults embrace critical role as models. Teachers work together as professionals, along with parents and community members, as partners to positively shape the social, emotional, and character development of young people entrusted to them each day. Students in their schools feel safe, respected, and connected to those around them, allowing them to thrive academically and socially, and be motivated to give back to their communities. The Bucks County Technical High School has been certified as a school that demonstrates dedicated focus on character development, has positive effect on academic achievement, student behavior, and school climate, and I just wanted to make note of that. I love working with the tech, and I think it's such a bonus to the community, but another feather in the cap. That's all I have.
Anybody else? Mr. Sullivan?
I feel obligated to say that I'm actually looking forward to Gym Night. This will be my first of the next eight years of Gym Nights, and go Red.
It's Blue. It's Blue.
Anyone else? We good? All right, I just want to close up, just do something a little different. I just want to remind the public of upcoming meetings. March 3rd will be a Policy Committee meeting in this boardroom at 6:30. On March 10th, 7:00, it will be another Public Work Session for the board in this room, and that leaves us with, March 24th will be the Public Board Session in this room at 7:00. The 25th at Fertabar Elementary will be the Facilities and Planning Committee, and on the 31st in this room at 6:30 will be the Business Operations Committee. So for all those that wish to attend, check the website for any updates or cancellations. That brings us to adjournment. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
No, I need a first.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
Second. Mrs. Hollenback? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming out this evening.